It looks like the applicant is represented. And John first, so let's, let's open the meeting. My name is Eric Worth. I'm the new chair of the Cold Springs ZBA. It's my first meeting as a chair, so please bear with me if I'm shaky on some of the procedures. The other two board members tonight are John Martin and Laura Bozzi. Two seats are vacant, and but the three of us together constitute a quorum. There are two items on the agenda, 33 Market Street, a six-foot fence. Review of minutes, so unless the board members object, I suggest we leave the minutes for last and deal with the hearing first. Now, the applicants have been very good about providing the required materials. They have sent us proof of mailing of notices to all the addresses that were discussed at the last meeting at the workshop. And they have provided an affidavit for the posting of the sign. So our bases are covered there. One question though is the, this, this project was referred to Putnam County Planning as a requirement. And I'm not, I'm not aware that we've heard back from them. Is Jeff here tonight, or is it?
Yeah, I don't think Jeff is here, but last I spoke to Jeff, oh, probably around three o'clock, he had not received anything and he had followed up multiple times with the county planning department.
He told me he would let me know if he received a response, and I've not heard anything.
All right, so I would say no.
He sent it to them on the 23rd of November.
Correct.
Of course, we had a Thanksgiving holiday in between. And I have, believe they have 30 days to respond.
Yes, they do.
So, John, where does that put us as far as proceeding with the hearing tonight?
Well, you're, you're more than, you know, you can absolutely proceed with the public hearing itself. You can't take any action tonight. I guess the question is, do you want to keep the public hearing open until you receive those county comments? That's really, you know, the only gray area, I guess. It's up to the board, some boards. Depending on the project, larger scale projects, you'd probably want to keep the public hearing open. For something like this, there's probably not too much of a harm in closing the public hearing. That's completely in your discretion.
Is there any drawback to leaving it open?
Not really, no. I mean, that's probably the safer belt and suspenders approach.
I don't see that it gains us anything to close it since we can't vote. Can we even vote on the interpretation? I mean, there's a two-part request before us, first an interpretation, and then if necessary, a request for variance.
Yeah, I guess you could vote on the interpretation because I don't believe interpretations require 239M referrals.
Yeah.
So you could, you could act on the interpretation, that would be step one. And then proceed with step two, hopefully at the next meeting, you'll have the county comments.
In order to act on the interpretation, we would have to close the hearing, is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, you could close the hearing with respect to the interpretation question only and keep it open with respect to the variance question.
How do the other board members feel about how we should proceed then in this light? Would you like to go ahead and deal with the interpretation tonight in its entirety? And then finish up with the variance if necessary next week, next meeting?
I guess, do we have to decide that now? I'd like to have the discussion about the interpretation just because it's so, for me, it's so new. I don't, I don't know, I don't have in mind.
Yeah, I would, I recommend, sorry, go ahead. I recommend just proceeding with the public hearing, both on the interpretation issue and the area variance issue, let the applicant make his, or make his or her present, her presentation. And then after they're done with the discussion, open it up to the public. I don't think there's anyone else out there, but who knows who may chime in in the next 10 minutes. And then at that point, when the applicant's done and the public has been heard, then you guys can decide what you want to do procedurally. You've got some leeway, so. I wouldn't concern yourself with that. I would go through the fact gathering process and then you might be a little easier to make a decision on what you want to do in, you know, 15 minutes, 20 minutes.
John Martin, are, if you're, we cannot hear you, you seem to be muted.
Sorry, guys.
Now, that's better.
Sorry, so. You know, I'm thinking if we feel like we need some thought on the matter of the interpretation, if things aren't, we don't agree that they're absolutely clear. If we need that extra time just to think about it, if we're going to keep the public hearing open and wait for the county, I, I don't see the harm in it.
All right. So let's, let's open the hearing.
My opinion, that's all.
Makes sense. Let's open the hearing. And deal first with the question of the interpretation. Mr. Morando, would you like to summarize your, your perspective on the, on the code, question of the code?
Absolutely. Good evening. My name's Anthony Morando. I'm an attorney with Cuddy and Fader. I'm here tonight on behalf of Richard and Natasha. The, the interpretation that we've asked for is based on a provision of the code, section 13417D1. If I could just go through a little bit of background to sort of help you understand where we are with this and how we came to filing the appeal, I think that might help a little bit. So the property that, that we're involved with is 33 Market Street, I think you're well aware of it. It's the property down by the water, across from the train station. And that property is located in the B1 general business district. The property contains a residence and residential structures. The appeal is of the code enforcement officer's decision on September 30th, which directed Richard and Natasha to seek a height variance from that code section I just referenced. The applicants, however, filed a building permit this summer to install approximately a 50-foot section of a six-foot average, average height fence along their northern property line. And their northern property line abuts a B1 district as well. Both properties are in the B1 district. The, the fence is proposed behind the rear deck of an existing house that's up on the street. It's about, I think it's 60 or 70 feet back from the street, about 68 feet, something like that. And where it's going will align parallel with the existing guest house that's there. The, the, so prior to that, the, the code enforcement officer issued a decision that directed them to go to the HDRB. Now, this was a prior code enforcement officer back in June. So Richard, Natasha and Paul went to the HDRB, got approval for the fence with that decision from the code enforcement officer, which effectively just said, you just need HDRB approval. So we have a pending building permit application. Our understanding at the time, based on the decision and based on just the community as a whole and past practice, that six-foot tall fences were looked, were permitted along the lot lines of B1. The six-foot fences were permitted along the lot lines of residential properties in the B1 district. And that was consistent with the decision we got at that time. So again, they go to the HDRB, they get the certificate of appropriateness. The Paul follows up with the building department and after a couple of weeks, I believe, is advised through a new decision that effectively said, now you need to go get a variance from that section I referenced for height. So that's what brought us here. So our understanding all along was that is permitted and we proceeded as such. So I can walk through it a little further, but I just want to stop there and see if that all makes sense as far as procedurally how we got there.
Yes.
Okay. So that section of the code essentially refers to residence districts. It's under a section of the code that says supplementary regulations applying to all residence districts. So it's, it's not an incredibly complex theory that we have. Essentially, that section in our opinion, when it respect to fencing, doesn't apply to lots in the B1 district. And we believe that's supported by, again, past practice in the community. We're aware of, you know, many fences in similar situations with similar facts that are taller than four feet and certainly actually six feet and up. But in addition to that, the section of the code that talks about the B1 district and, and just, you know, as an example, section one, I think it's 1349G2, actually requires a minimum height of five-foot fencing in certain situations in the B1 district. So that's not to say that that section says you can put six-foot fencing anywhere. That's just to say that as an example of our position, that's, that is supported by the language of the code itself, is that provision. I, I, I can, I don't really want to go any further than that right now. I mean, I think that sort of explains it. We're in the B1 district. The, the section that we're referring to applies to residence districts and fencing is addressed elsewhere for the B1 district.
Can you say again what section of code you've been referring to, can you just?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, no problem. It's 13417D1. And that's the code section referred to by the code enforcement officer in the decision. So if you have the code, I think it's actually, it's page 13454 would be at the bottom of it.
Thank you.
And, and what does it mean when it says fences or walls within that? In the section, you mentioned fences or walls with a height in excess of four feet shall conform to the requirements set forth herein for buildings. How do you interpret that?
Well, I think where I would start is that whole section, again, applies to residence districts. So that's not an issue for us because it's not, we're not in the residence district. We're a residence in a B1 district. So if you, if you turn the page back, it says supplementary regulations applying to all residence districts.
Right, I know that, yeah.
Okay, sorry, I didn't mean to repeat it.
No, no, no. Yeah, I get where, how we got to this particular section.
Yeah.
I was just looking for, I was searching around a little bit earlier for the requirements as set forth here and for buildings, you know, and I mean, I found some, some sections in it. And when it says herein, it would usually mean within the section itself and.
Correct.
So that, that's one of the reasons why we're just looking into this generally at this point.
And again, the reason I started with the background is because I thought that'd be helpful because in practice, our, our understanding was the code was interpreted to allow fences greater than four feet and again, along lot lines in B1 districts. So it seemed pretty plain language to us, but we certainly are going through the process to make sure we understand if we're, if we're incorrect about that.
Well, I think in the past, when we looked at business districts, we were looking to see what kind of nuisances were being claimed as a consequence of, you know, whether it's lighting or noise or something that had to be established. And, you know, I think issues of privacy, you know. You know, that's one of the things I was going to ask the attorney about what his views were on that. I mean, what, 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 what are the reasons for the fence?
Well, I'm sorry.
What are, what are the reasons?
I'm delayed, I'm sorry.
My, 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 what were the reasons for the fencing in this case? Well, six foot.
Right, so if I could, if I could just offer the, I think, and I'm certainly not arguing that I know all here. But I, but I think when an application came to you previously, meaning you, the zoning board of appeals, it was in an R1 district. So you were evaluating a variance from, from this section of the code for an R1 district or an R3, whatever the residence district is, I don't think those got to you before. I think they, they were, if they were, if they were like us in the B1 zone, it never got to you. So I don't think whether it had a nuisance or was blocking something or there was a purpose or it wasn't harming the environment, it wasn't harming the neighborhood. Those aren't factors that really came up for something like this in the past because it wasn't dealt with the zoning board of appeals.
And I, yeah, I know this particular application really hasn't, that I know of, hasn't been considered before, but I've read some of the papers and I think it's, and some of the letters and the suggestion is, from what I understand, is there's a hard rock shelf immediately below that you can't put plantings in there? Do you know what the depth is of, you know, how, how, how shallow, how, how, how close to the surface is the rock?
Yeah, I probably want Paul to.
Okay, I'll let you guys go finish through your.
Yeah, well, we actually, we weren't going to get, so we're happy to talk through whatever issues you want to talk through. We, those, those issues like bedrock and plantings and all those questions, we kind of were leaving that to the variance side of this in support of the request for the variance, but the, the, the grade tapers up along the, the side of the, the guest house. We're happy to go through that now, if you prefer. I just, we were kind of starting with the interpretation, but it's.
No, I get you. I don't want to interrupt your.
No, no.
I was just curious why you were there, but you know, Eric's really running the show here, so I, I'll back off.
Let's just, let's stick to the, the interpretation of the code right now and get that settled. And that will give us a basis for dealing with the issues of the, the facts of this case, the individual facts. Right now, we're dealing with, with a general, the general principles of the code. We're trying to establish what they are and let me just bring up some elements of the code that you haven't cited that I think are relevant and possibly decisive. If you go to 134-9, which is the, of course, the section on B1 and subsection G3. This section, this G section is supplementary regulations pertaining to B1. And under that, item three reads applicable requirements of 134-17. Now, if you go to the next section, 134-10, which deals with B2, we, we find the same analogous regulations in F6. It reads requirements of 134-17 applicable to this district. And so on for every following, or almost every following section about defining districts. They all refer us to 134-17 and, and they incorporate those regulations. So to me, it's pretty clear that the intent of the code is for 134-17 in its entirety to be incorporated into each of these district descriptions where, where it's cross-referenced. So the, the mere fact that the heading of 134-17 refers to residences is an artifact of its position in the code. But we're, we're not intended to be distracted by that heading when we, when we incorporate these regulations into all the other district designations.
So I think what I would, I would say to that is there's a key word in, in those sections and both of those, you know, parallel sections, B1, B2 districts. There's a term applicable, applicable. So it doesn't actually say all sections of those, of those 17 and 18 are incorporated by reference. It says applicable. And my view of this, after reading the code as a whole, and again, prior practice in the village is that the fence requirement there is not an applicable requirement to the B1 district. So it's not that the whole, the whole, it's not that the whole section is, but certain applicable sections are. Otherwise, it would say something like all sections of 17 and 18 are incorporated by reference.
Okay, well, that's an excellent point that really, so the, the key question here, it seems to me, is is the regulation on fence height applicable to B1? That, that is the key question for the board, I think, to understand this issue.
And, and I guess, oh, I apologize. I keep getting a delay. Sorry. I would say, and again, I kind of come back full circle. When you read a code holistically and you look at the, you know, provisions that apply to certain districts, given the section I referenced that actually mandates fencing taller than four feet, it seems pretty conflicting that that, they'd have the four-foot fence limitation and that other language. And then couple that with the five-foot requirement, again, which isn't in all cases, but it's pretty clear that the intent in the B1 is to, at least my view of it, is the intent of the B1 is to allow greater than four feet. And again, because so many existing fences in similar circumstances are greater than that, I think that's where it kind of reads us to, or leads us to the conclusion that it's not an applicable provision.
Well, the, the clause G2, which talks about five-foot fences, five feet or more, is describing a very specific situation. Certainly, a number of conditions have to exist for that. And, and, and the, the five-foot fence is dictated by the planning board according to this. So it's a kind of a narrow exception there. I would propose two reasons why the four-foot limit in 134-17 should be read as applicable to B1 and all the other districts. And number one, there's no reason not to see it as applicable. There's no logical contradiction in having a fence, a fence height restriction in B1. It's not, there's nothing inherently, there's no inherent conflict there that prevents us from incorporating the fence height restriction. It's not, there's no like functional reason why it is not a meaningful, why it would not be a meaningful rule in B1. The second reason is the, in dictating the four-foot limit in, in R1, in residence districts, the village has a certain interest in mind. It's exercising an interest that is a legitimate one. For example, preserving neighborliness, preserving views, et cetera. All those rationales lie behind that rule. Now, to me, those same rationales, that same interest is just as, just as applicable in B1 and other districts. The B1 district extends up much of Main Street, encompasses the whole residential area west of the railroad tracks. And so for the same reason that the village wants to see, does not want to see tall fences in residence districts, equally, it has the same interest in not wanting to see them unregulated in B1 districts. So on the, on the basis of the village's interest in this rule, there is an equal, equal application in both kinds of districts and no reason not to, not to. There is no reason to have an absence of regulation of fences in B1.
So it's always difficult. I don't want to respond in a way that sounds like what you said isn't reasonable. But if I, if I may, just be an attorney for a second and, and answer a little bit of that. It, it seems as though that may be a current desire of the village. If that was the case, I'm not sure that it is, but if, assuming it is, since it stated that it was, that I don't know that that necessarily is what the code means or meant when it was written or as has been applied for many years. I think, and I, please forgive me if I'm misquoting, but I think it's, somebody may have even mentioned at the last meeting that they don't recall of, of there being an issue with a six-foot fence in a B1 district before, coming before this board. So that would lead me to believe that the way it's been interpreted for many years is it doesn't apply to the B1. And it's difficult because of course, in a small community like mine and yours, you don't always get written interpretations on these things, right? Somebody gets a permit, they fill the fence, it's over, move on, it's a fence. And that's how it kind of progressed. And then when it's brought up and it becomes sort of a topic of conversation, well, what do we want it to mean? Well, that's the only problem is that's not necessarily what's at issue here. It's what does it actually mean? I think certainly what you brought up in that provision is relevant for sure. I just, I guess you know where my conclusion is on it.
But yeah, you know, it's, there is, again, as Eric mentioned, the reference in the B1 general district of the G3 saying, go look at 13417 and 13418 with regards to this issue. And again, I understand also your point that you're saying in other instances, you're, you're saying, you know, in some cases, under certain conditions, a five-foot fences required. And then there are, there have been instances where you may have heard that six-foot fences have been permitted without question in the B1 district. But I'm looking at what Eric is pointing at, and it's something I had noticed as well with that referencing, you know. Tell me why it would not be applicable. Why, because it does say, you know, applicable, applicable requirements of 13417 and 18. I mean, I'm just trying to think of how it would not be applicable and, you know. Sometimes when you look at the code, you don't look at things in isolation. You look at the whole of code, and I think that's what Eric is doing here to get what the general understanding, so it's, again, it's just an interpretation, but sometimes you just don't look at things in isolation. You try to figure out what, what is, what is the village looking for as far as how it wants to maintain development and/or, you know, building on a property, whether it be a fence or a structure. But that, those are points, you know, for both sides. I, I get the arguments on both sides and I mean, we're not even making an argument personally, you know, obviously, zoning, you know, board is not making an argument. We have no argument to make. We're just trying to look at the code and interpret it. And so we are listening to what you're saying. But I do believe that there has to be something said in regard to just looking at the code as a whole. And what's its general intent? Without, without drafting any rules or provisions on our own that might be outside of what the code says.
I understand. I think, I think, I think there's at least some vagueness in it that would lead a applicant to be unsure of what that would mean. And I think in that regard, with respect to how zoning is interpreted, the vagueness should weigh in favor of the property owner. And I believe that's probably what happened in the past. But if, so I guess where I'm going is I don't want to say that what you're, what you're, just like you, I'm not arguing about it. I want to make clear that I just think on its face, it's a little bit of a stretch to apply that there. And I don't know that it's been like, and I don't know that prior interpretations have been like that in the past.
We don't have before us any evidence regarding prior interpretations. I'm not aware of any. So we would need citations or, you know, specifics before we could assign any weight to that.
We do have a list of all the properties in, we, you know, we could show, we, I don't have necessarily, again, to have something that says specifically what I'm saying is difficult because more times than not, it doesn't come up. It just happens. But we, but we did do a survey of the B1 district. We did pull out, I, Paul, correct me if I'm wrong, I think at least eight or 10, for example, fences that have, that are on property lines in B1 zone with, between two properties with residences. So those all exist. And I think the code is, I don't have a reference in front of me, but the code is many years, many years in play here. I think the section is well over 20 years, if I'm, please correct me if I'm wrong.
I think you're right about that. But right now, in this part of the hearing, we're just dealing with understanding the principles of the code. And the, the fences that are out there in the real world don't shed any light on what the code means. I'm, I'm still trying to, I'm still trying to understand why the four-foot limit on fences would not be applicable in B1. I mean, it is just as a, it's a simple rule. It's a rule that is meaningful in the context of B1, especially given since residential uses occur in B1 as well as business uses. I just, I can't see any, any basis for saying that's not applicable, except, no, I see, I just see none. I, Laura, do you have any thoughts on this point?
I guess I'm, I'm just, I'm still trying to understand how what's happened in the past and is it that, that, so just help me understand that piece of it. So there are six-foot fences, there's been this kind of convention in the past, but they didn't come to the ZBA, they didn't get variances.
We don't know.
I guess we don't, but we do know, I mean, I guess one, one factor to consider is that we had a, a six-foot fence in the B1 district come before us a couple meetings ago.
In R1, the fence itself was.
Fence was in R1, yeah.
Okay.
The fence was in R1 against the B1 zone. And I think to John's point, they, I think part of the, again, it's your board, correct me if I'm wrong. Part of the calculation there was because the four-foot limitation applied in the R1, I think, please correct me if I'm wrong, you granted a variance in that case because of the nuisance from the B1 coming over into the R1, if I recall correctly. because of the nuisance from the B one coming over into the R one, if I recall correctly.
That's right. And, and that has been in, in my past recollection with other business-like operations and or public such as schools or a library with lights, we would look at what was the nuisance issue at hand and, and, and how that would weigh in on the application. Anyway, so I'm not going to go further with that. We're going to stick with what Eric's talking about.
No, but I mean, Eric, I see your, I mean, I certainly see your point. I see your point in the code. I mean, I, I look into John first too. I mean, it'd be helpful if, if he has an interpretation that would help us.
Yeah, so, you know, I think the applicant's kind of relying on the fact that, you know, there's a bunch of fences in the B one zone greater than six feet probably didn't require any variances. But you know, what happened in the past in the village, you know, especially the fact that you have a new building inspector and this building inspector made a different, different interpretation and found a different section of the code that the prior building inspector either overlooked or, or didn't carry much weight to. So, and I think it's a reasonable interpretation, it's reasonable, rational, you know. So municipalities, villages can kind of change their minds as long as there's good faith and, you know, you're, you're doing your due diligence. So just because what happened in the past, you know, two wrongs don't make a right. So just because maybe in the past they were doing it wrong, doesn't, it shouldn't prevent you from doing what you think is right.
Right. And I, I really would emphasize again that the mere existence of these six foot fences in, in other B one lots tells us nothing, we, we know nothing about how they got there. There, there are plenty of six foot fences in our one lots right now that we don't know how they got there. They may have, maybe they got variances. It just, somebody would have to do research to figure that out. And, and no one has done research about the, these ones in B one.
They may not even have, those fences might not even have permits, you know, people could have just.
We really can't draw, it's really illegitimate to draw any conclusion from their existence.
I, I think it's, I apologize for interrupting, but I think I've been trying, I've been listening. And I think there's something that's important to consider is that we had a decision from a building inspector only, you know, a snapshot prior to getting a second decision. So it wasn't that the decision, we're solely, we're using that as sort of anecdotal evidence to support our understanding of coming into this with a reasonable approach and saying, here's our billing permit. Building inspector says, go get H D R B approval and you're good. And then we get that, a new building inspector shows up and five minutes later, we have to go to the ZBA for a variance. So it's not like it came out of nowhere that we felt our position was valid to start.
So no, saying it's invalid at all. We're, we're all just trying to figure out really what, 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 what's the intent of the code? And that's all we're here to apply or not apply. You know, just, and when it goes into issues of past experience and what the board has done, you know, like I said, people who, whether it was R one district or, you know, typically we'd never granted, we never really granted in an R one district unless they were bordering up against a B one property that created a nuisance. And that, that, that's been my experience on the board. And those are the ones that actually came before us that I, you know, in my experience, I think I've been on it 10 years. It's that I've seen other fences go up when I say, wow, we never saw that application come before us. But we're not in the business of enforcement.
No, and, and, and again, I, I, without, it's funny because we're both sort of reading it the way we're seeing it. I'm seeing it on its face. This is a really applicable to a residence district. The section that says applicable, which I think was a great point, John, about why, you know, why is a section not applicable? But it seems to me that if you say that, then every section, every time it says generically applicable in your code, and I don't have a reference in front of me, it's then giving the property owner sort of the burden of determining what that means. And I think that's what zoning is not intended to do. It's supposed to be clear enough that an applicant would know that or a property would know that. And then when you pile on a decision from building inspector in this exact case, which didn't require one, and then all of a sudden did, I think that's where it starts to feel like the intent and maybe desire that's current doesn't really meet up with the language of the code.
Yeah, I totally get that point. And, and getting back to the applicable, it, it, that's enough to put somebody on notice, I would think, that potentially this could apply.
Right. I mean, the fact that, you know, there's a specific fence requirement in the, in one thirty four seventeen that applies because you're proposing a fence, you know, if you were proposing an accessory building or garage, then those would apply. If you're not, then they don't apply. So I think you can kind of look at the word, whether it, whether it's applicable, depends on what you're constructing.
But I think, but I think the point is, is that if you, if we break it down, we see what D one actually is, it's exception to yard requirements. So it's, it's imposing inside that section that there's a yard requirement to deal with. When in the B one zone, there isn't a yard requirement to deal with.
Other is.
Or fences.
There are side yards. These are exceptions to yard requirements, meaning the dimensions of the side yards.
Right.
And you want us to have side yard requirements.
Right, hold on one second.
These are permitted obstruction. So normally, obvious, as you well know, a yard is meant, is intended to be free of obstructions. It's meant to be an open space.
A yard is defined to building. And a fence is not a building. I wish I had that in front of me. A side yard, a side yard is an open unoccupied space on the same lot as the building situated between the building and the sideline of the lot and extending from the front yard to the rear yard.
Alright, so it should be open and unoccupied. But, but section D here gives us exceptions to that in which there are permitted obstructions. Obstructions that are permitted in the yard, which normally should be open and occupied except for these cases. So, and fences, short fences is one of them.
So it's, it seems to me, in, in looking at this code, and because we've made the initial application in one thirty four seventeen as a heading, it says very clearly supplementary regulations applying to all residence districts. I know, I know Eric, you took, you know, difference with that, but this is a B one district. I don't know how it could be interpreted as being a residence district. Residential use and residential, residential district are two very different things.
Well, if, if you take that point of view, then you, you introduce an intolerable contradiction in the code because you're saying the entirety of one thirty four dash seventeen does not apply to B one because of that heading. That's what you're saying. But then that, that makes an absurdity out of this cross-reference. Why would there be a cross-reference to a section which in its entirety was irrelevant? Obviously, we're meant to disregard the heading and, and take what is applicable out of the section and incorporate it into the B one, the B two, the I one, et cetera, because those cross-reference appears in all of those. And I, I just haven't heard a reason why a fence, a fence specification does not apply in B one.
I, I think there's a general, general recognition that, you know, while there are zoned areas in the village as in any municipality, but there's also an understanding that there can be residential, you know, homes in those areas that people chose to build in when they did. And I think that that's one of the reasons why there may be a cross-reference there. It's just, it's not all just business. It's, it's, it's mixed.
Well, I would go even farther than that. The, the cross-reference appears even in district designations that do not allow residences. We have the same cross-reference. And so it's, the code, the code authors are thinking, they're extending these, these requirements to every type of district.
Right, go ahead.
One of, one of the things that maybe I bring to the table that's, that's different than what other people have is that I spent more than two years on the code update committee. And the, and the charge of the code update committee was really in large part to look at these kinds of inherent contradictions and trying to, trying to propose ways to resolve them. So I'm not at all surprised that there are contradictions like this in the, in the code. But no one, I, I mean, I had never interpreted this, this way before, that, that this would apply to B one. And no one else, as far as we can figure out, has ever interpreted that way either. So I'm just really pointing out that, that we, we can't, I mean, I know that there, the code is kind of sacrosanct, but, but it certainly has its issues. And that's why NYSERDA and why, why the state wouldn't approve waterfront protection plan until that code was updated and revised. So I would just point out that, that there are contradictions and I'm not surprised and it shouldn't be news.
But until, until a code section is taken out, you know, if it's deemed to be contradictory, it has to be accepted and considered on its plain meaning. You can't have, you can't look at a code and, and in a way that discounts any particular provision, you know, as long as it's in the code.
I agree, John, but it, but I would say that this kind of a bold heading where it states to all residence districts is a pretty significant reference.
I make the same argument for the fact that it's continually referenced over and over again, that section of the code many times. It's not one time. I mean, I, I think that that is a stronger indication, but it's something that applies to other parts, that it applies to other districts than the fact that there's, you know, the word residence in, in one heading. And I, I, I mean, I agree with Eric's interpretation.
Well, if we just look at, let's just take at random another one of the regulations in one thirty four dash seventeen. For example, corner lots, there's a rule here about, you cannot have a, a high obstruction on the corner which would block traffic. Somebody driving, trying to make a turn, you can't have anything more than 30 inches in that triangle area on the corner. Now, that is, there, that is perfectly applicable in B one. I mean, that is example, that's a very sensible rule. It's, the village has an interest in promulgating that rule and, and in applying it in all districts. Because, and so, you know, I, I don't think you could get away with, if you were in B one, putting up an obstruction higher than 30 inches on the corner, blocking driver's vision. I don't think, I don't, I don't think that we, we should be making a reading that makes that possible. I don't, that doesn't make sense. It doesn't make sense that we should throw out the corner, the corner, the obstruction principle. If we throw, if we throw out the fence rule, we have to throw out the corner obstruction rule as well. And it's just, there's no reason to do that because both rules make sense in, in other districts besides R one.
So in addition to what you're referencing, Eric, and again, you know, just to emphasize to me, zoning comes into effect so that their desirable uses in specific areas so that people know where to potentially live without nuisance issues. I mean, that's really what it comes down to, why zoning comes into place. And then there's those, those fuzzy areas of mixed use. Like I say, when residential, when people decide to move in and put a home in, in place, they're basically, basically moving in and being aware, but with, you know, that they're, they're moving into an area where they could have extra lights, extra noise and everything. But then there are other areas where it may be B one and they're mostly just residential areas. And the idea is that the code is trying to be, it was tried to be drafted so that the different types of uses can be recognized and cross-referenced. And I think that it doesn't draw black and white lines across it. I mean, and, and particularly the reference here of, you know, the applicable requirements of one thirty four seventeen, you know, in the one thirty four nine G three. I, I just think that there's a sense to that.
Do you want to open up the public hearing or at least confirm that there's nobody from the public that, is any comments?
So we have, we've explored the issue. We've heard the applicant's point of view. The board has countered with some alternative thinking. And are there any members of the public who would like to speak now or ask questions?
There is no one else except all of you.
Alright, so.
Thank you. Just wanted to confirm that.
Yes, it's on the record. There's, the public has had an opportunity. There is nobody here. Laura, do you have anything to add? We've, I think we've, I mean, I've said all, everything I have to say myself about how I read this. I, I mean, also I'd like to hear from John first, whether, how we should, whether you have, can shed any light on this notion of applicable? When a cross-reference in one section tells us to go to another section and find applicable rules? How is one supposed to behave?
Right. So I, I, I think, and I kind of stated this before, that, you know, it kind of depends on what you're constructing and since you're constructing a fence and one thirty four seventeen has regulations regarding fences, then, then it applies. If you weren't constructing a fence, then it doesn't apply. I think that's what they mean by applicable.
Laura?
I mean, that sounds logical to me. I agree with that.
Alright, so let's move on in the hearing. So we, John first, I, I gather we can't, we cannot vote or decide, or we can decide the interpretation, but we'll finish with the hearing by covering the variance question. And then close the hearing and then we can vote on the interpretation. Is that correct?
Yeah, so you can, well, yeah, so it's up to you if you want to close the hearing tonight with respect to the interpretation and make a decision on that. And then keep the hearing open with respect to the variance pending the receipt of the county comments.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I didn't want to interrupt.
Go ahead.
Is there value in leaving that open with it, John? If in the event we get some more information on those properties we referenced earlier. We certainly have the parcels addresses and the, we've done a lot of work on that. Because I, I, the board could always issue decisions on both at the, at the next meeting.
Yeah, if you have some supplemental information you'd like to submit that may sway the board, then you can absolutely request that the hearing on the interpretation be held open as well.
Well, I, I would encourage you to do that. I, I would welcome any new information. I mean, I, I would like to see not just a list of tall fences in B one that, that exist, but because that, to me, that itself would, would contribute nothing, but rather how they got there. Evidence about the implementation of the code in the past would be relevant.
And Eric, I think that, you know, yeah, leaving it open is good for the, for the interpretation issue. Because I think that when we come to make that decision, you know, each board member has to be prepared to reference and, you know, this, this code section is just like you have done in order to, and how we got to our particular, you know, interpretation. We have to do the cross-referencing as you have done. So I think we should have it written out, each one of us, so that we can be sure that we're stating it as clearly as possible.
Alright, so we will leave the public hearing open. And at the next meeting, we will entertain any response from Plutnam County Planning, any further factual evidence from the applicants. And then we'll continue with the hearing into the, into the variance at the next meeting.
Do you want the applicant to provide his presentation on the variances just in case you have some questions and they may need some follow-up or?
Sure.
You know, just, just so you can kind of get it started and, you know, who knows, there may be. You know, just, just so you can kind of get it started and, you know, who knows, there may be some questions you may have or some information, because it kind of. Seems clear, you know, it doesn't seem clear, but um, you know, I I think the applicant. Has a strong indication at this point as far as where you're headed on the interpretation, but obviously you're still open. To any information he may submit, but it may help if he can start his presentation on the. Variance itself, that way you may have some follow up information that he can provide before the next meeting.
Absolutely. But um. You prepared to do that?
Absolutely.
Miranda?
Absolutely.
Great.
So shifting gears, we are now here requesting an area variance in the alternative of the interpretation uh, for the. Uh, stretch of fifty foot, six foot fencing that we've been talking about this evening. Um, as you know, I won't repeat it, you've all been on this board, there's a balancing test that's used to determine whether a variance is warranted. Um, and the the balancing test evaluates the benefit versus detriment to the community. Uh, our letter walks you through, you know, each of those standards um, with some support, so I won't, I won't bore you. Uh, with with sort of a regurgitation of that, but if it's okay, I'll go through um, sort of a big picture summary. On our on our view of the variance and and why we believe it's certainly warranted here. Um, I think a big factor to consider is that this particular fence and where it's proposed will certainly have no harm. To the community or a change, um, you know, the character of the neighborhood. The area in question and the fence as proposed will not be visible from any public location. Um, you know, Paul, if you want to bring up one of the, we did a little simulation, which was reviewed by the HDRB as well. Um, and and Paul's going to bring it up, and what that simulation shows is a red, a little red area. Uh, through the trees and it's it's basically leaf off conditions, although those are evergreens, so there's still needles on there. Uh, but it's it's almost seventy feet back from the road, it's behind those trees and it's down a grade behind an existing guest house. Um, the, Paul, are you able to bring it up or no, you're on mute? You're on mute, Paul.
Sorry, the the host has to enable me to to use screen sharing.
Oh, okay.
I think we, um, that was the, you're talking about the simulation that was in your um, your application packet, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Um, we've, I think we've seen it all.
Okay. I can keep going, so so really, we're really from anywhere. It's not visible, except on this lot and the adjoining lot, who the the owner of that lot is very much in support of of this fence being being installed there. Um, the location and height is consistent with the existing footprints on this property with the existing guest house that's there. Um, again, if if it's in our materials, but we have a diagram that shows the fence running between the property line. Starting at about the back deck of the guest house, um, and providing um, some level of screening there with open air. Um, open air design of the fence, that is. The, as I mentioned, the fence is more than sixty eight feet from a market street, um, and uh, it it. Where it aligns up there, if you if you know that, the sort of when you come down lon. Uh, the the grade goes down right across and that whole ledge kind of continues. So where the fence will be proposed is right at the, right where that grade kind of changes up. And if you, we also submitted photos that you can see where the driveway next door at twenty five market, when you pull in. The driveway faces against the deck in that area right there. Uh, with that grade change, the driveway and a and a number of other uh. Uh, factors that we demonstrated in our materials, uh, we think the proposed fence certainly um, again, is not a detriment in any way, but actually a benefit to both. And uh, which which Paul can sort of touch on in a minute is uh, the six foot nature of this. Uh, and again, it's an average six feet because the grade changes as you go towards the uh, towards the river and um. Um, and the heights kind of shift go up and down a little bit. But right, right at that location, uh, it doesn't actually feel like a six foot fence because of the changing grade. And the way that the fence has been designed actually allows air and light to pass through as well, so it's not a complete block. Um, uh, of of, you know, sort of the neighborly communication ability that we were talking about earlier. Um, I would also add that, again, the HDRB issued an approval for this and in their determination. Uh, they confirm there's no negative effects on uh, the neighborhood with respect to aesthetics, historical features. Um, and so on and so on, so Paul, do you want to touch on that at all for a second? You're on mute, Paul.
Yeah, sure, I'm I'm just looking at the at the package.
You should be able to share now, Paul.
Okay, okay. Okay, great, everyone can see this. Yeah, I don't remember which exhibit this was in in the in your package, but this is the. The uh, the last page of that, the initial application, this is what we submitted to the HDRB for approval. Um, and so you can see that this is the the corner of the guest house here. This is the the deck that that Anthony was referencing, and this is the overlap of the fence past that edge of the deck, so. In this part where the fence is, um, is where it's it's, you know, you can see easily into the adjacent property. As Anthony pointed out, this is a a six foot average fence height because this grade goes down. More than four feet from this this eastern end, we're we're saying that north is up on this plan page. From this eastern end to the western end. So that's that, that's why it it doesn't slope to meet the slope, because then the fence itself would have to slope. But it just steps down in these in these increments.
The, yeah.
So is that all clear?
Yeah, I think that's clear, and I think this is a great image to show um, how the fence starts. Uh, doesn't start too close to market, it starts just around the deck and proceeds there.
Are there vertical openings or horizontal openings in the fence?
Horizontal.
Horizontal, okay. And uh, it does, is it just one property that it's shielding the northern, is there just northern property of which the? Long, or is it run into another property?
No.
As it goes further.
Just that one property.
Just one property.
Yeah, yeah, that side of the property is like, you know, I I think about six hundred and fifty feet or something to that to that effect.
So this is. In the letter, I'm sorry, go ahead, Paul.
So this is that same corner of the of the um. Of the guest house, this is the garage that you see on on Market Street when you go by. Um, we do not have an updated survey, this is a survey from twenty seventeen, we had no reason to update it since then, so. But this this um, is a useful uh, survey because it shows you, these are one foot contour lines, so you can see the thirty foot. And you can see the twenty five, so each one of these represents a foot grade change, so you can see how steep this is. Um, obviously, Beatty and Watson didn't survey on the adjoining property, but this is the property that's to the north here, right? So it is just that one property line that's that's shared.
And Paul, can you show us how far the um? The fence would extend on this?
Sure, so that, um, this is, this is another survey that's just a little bit cleaner, that doesn't have the topo on it. And I'm showing you that because that's what the basis for this other slide is. So this is, this is that same, an outtake from that survey. And shows from the property line, not from the street, because the street is out, as you can see, out farther than that. But from the from the property line back to the beginning of the cent fence is sixty eight and a half feet. And then the fence is itself fifty feet long. So here again, you can see that that overlap that was part of this this first slide, so that's this corner, and that's that overlap.
How many properties, Paul, are, you you said there is the one, and that's the fellow who sent the letter to?
That's Tom Tatch, you can see his name on this survey, he's on that's on the property for quite some time.
Okay.
And you can see where the parking lot is in relation to where the fence is.
Points out parking lot and shed, there are two sheds there as well. That are right there, so they're from from the Tom Tatchik side, um, this view of the yard is is already blocked, but but these. Sheds is is common, uh, commonly the case in Cold Spring or are um, not well maintained, so they're in poor shape.
So Paul, those are sheds, that's not a, that's not the house, correct?
That's right, the house, the house, house isn't shown in this survey, um, because it's not the survey of that property. But but the house is back quite a bit farther from that, and it's and it's fairly close to um. There's a, there's a cliff drop off uh, just to the west of this, um, there's a like, an exterior gazebo that's on that property. And then the cliff drops off right after that.
So I went by the property, uh, Paul, to take a look, and it seems like there's a driveway that goes in. Uh, to the neighboring property that you referenced right there.
That's right.
And that that face of the house itself seemed to be only about. And I'm not sure if that's the front entrance, I imagine that's where the driveway is, but. Uh, it, the the building, the neighbor neighbors' home appears to be only about forty feet from the the back deck. Uh, of uh, the applicant's uh, guest house deck, right?
Yeah, I can't say what that distance is, I mean, there is a way, actually, you can measure on Google Earth, so. I imagine we could find that out, but we don't have access to his survey, so.
Yeah, it looks pretty close, though, when I went to look at it. I mean, it looked like if you had three cars across parked uh. Um, that it would just fill the space between. The 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 guest house deck that where the fence begins and uh, almost the front of the neighbor's house.
Yeah, I know they come in, they pull in and and they're, they face their headlights face the the deck of the guest house. So that means that they have to have at least thirty five feet to back up, because let's say an average vehicle is eighteen feet. So if it pulls in and has to pull out to go out, then it's probably at least that. Um, but I would have, I don't, I can't really comment, I I've actually. I don't, I don't remember being able to see the house from the street, so I haven't.
Paul, if you bring up the photo again, I don't think you can see it there, can you?
Um, see. Well, it's it's, so here's the car, I mean, this is the proper line over here, it's not, it's not in this image, this is the drive, and you see how it curves. In this case, the car is facing away, but the house isn't in this image, so.
And Paul, one last question, uh, so we've now spoken about the neighbor immediately to the north. Uh, is there another neighbor, is it the boatyard that is uh, west of uh, the Patachik's house? Uh, you know, I'm I'm trying to think of who the next neighbor is, almost due west of uh. This neighbor that we're referencing, is there one other than the boathouse?
Let's see, there, well, the boathouse is not there, um, it is not adjoining, but an adjoining property.
Paul Linsky, is that um?
Zaglinsky is on the other side of Tatchik.
Doesn't his property hook around and um, include areas to the west of Tatchik?
Uh, if so, it's not shown on this particular survey. Um, which usually does record adjoining lots, so it it could wrap around somewhat in front of. Um, of Tatchik, but not all the way to um, the the Crupp's property line. I mean, it's not, I don't see that property line in here, this is, this is their property going out into the uh, pier. Um, so I I don't see that referenced on here, and that's unusual for Beatty Watson not to include any adjoining. But I I can't off the, without looking at something, I can't, I can't say.
Paul, do you have uh, the photo that shows some of the rock outcroppings over there?
Yeah. Pull this down. So this is, this is the porch on the guest house, this is the corner of the guest house, that's the. The leader coming down, and that's Market Street in the background. And you can see how this grade goes up pretty radically, right, in fact, the grade is higher than the. Than the surface of the deck, right, right at that area. And then this, uh, that's one, that one I don't have, let's see if I can.
No, that was the one I was thinking of.
Okay.
So, I mean, I think that's. You know, where we were going tonight as far as our presentation, um, we appreciate the dialogue, so if there's anything else that we can.
Yeah, I have a question, um, so when you say average six foot height, are you measuring from the the grade? This is because what the photo we're looking at now shows a very uneven um, grade, so are you measuring from? The point where the fence enters the grade, the ground? I I assume, is that?
That's right, so each section of the fence would have that average of of six foot in that section of grade.
Right.
So it would, it would, it would average out to six foot, you're saying?
That's right.
Oh, oh, on the, on the photo that you, but Eric, if you have more. Um, the photo that you just showed um. With the rocks, yeah, so is the fence going? Where's the fence going, is it on top of the rocks, is it between the rocks and the building?
Yeah, it's it's between the rocks and and the house.
It's in here somewhere, you know.
It's on the downside slope of the rocks.
And and just added, you since we're in this area here of questioning and we have this slide up. So there there is not sufficient soil uh, continuously in this area to to put in any kind of shrubbery instead of a fenced. Of six feet in height.
There isn't, I mean, if you look at, if you look here, um, you can see that that this, see where it says ledge here? Right, so this is where all of that ledge is. Um, and it's, it's where, that's, this is where it's emerged above the surface, so that was a question that had come up earlier. Is, you know, could we see, I think at the very beginning, John, you asked about, you know, how deep is it, well, it it's very shallow. Um, so this um, is where it actually pierces the surface. And is and is visible, that's that's true on other portions of the property. So the, you know, here, the thing is that that, um, you know, you'd want to uh, core out for the post, that would be something you could do, but. But that that is your, that's the answer to the question, is that it's, yes, it's, it's quite close to the surface.
And so you'll have to be drilling into bedrock, I suppose, to 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 set the posts, uh, if there is. Sufficient dirt you're mentioning.
Yeah.
Another question, um, if it comes to um, deciding on the variance, uh, one of the factors will be substantiality. Um, and to understand that, we will need um, knowledge of the setbacks, the existing. Degree of encroachment on the setbacks. Um, I think at the, at the workshop, the board asked for something like a simple site plan. That is just an outline showing uh, boundaries, property boundaries, placement of buildings and required setbacks. So that we could understand, a- and then location of the fence um, within that scheme. Is that something you can give us?
Um, I'm, Paul, if you want to bring up, you know, the the overlay we did on the survey. Which is uh, what we were, what we were, what we were presenting in, you know, in response to um, to that request. The, I'm 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 not clear exactly what you're asking for, an actual site plan? Like um.
Well.
Had files, sat site plan?
Um, I mean, this, this um, survey we're looking at now is a great, um, is is. Does the job, um, but it only shows one side, um, the the regulations on side yards in B one. Um, are a little bit ambiguous and um, they talk about the two yards together. The two side yards must total at least ten feet. So um, we have to, we have to calculate how much this proposal encroaches on that requirement. Or.
Well, I think, but see, I think that's kind of where, why we're here, um, if we're, if we were under four feet, it wouldn't, it wouldn't. What we're asking for is a variance to allow a six foot as if it was a four foot, and a four foot wouldn't have that question. So that's why the the relief we're requesting is what it is, which is what the building inspector directed us to get.
Right, well, um, but when we grant a variance, we consider how much, how substantial. The um, encroachment is.
But the. Mr. Chairman, I think, is is your point that it's basically a a one foot or six inch setback from the property line? As opposed to if they put this fence um, four feet from the property line?
Yeah, is not the kind of um. Reasoning we go through when we're considering the substantiality issue.
Well, I think it's. I I think the substantiality, the main focus is the the four feet to the six feet and and calculating that difference.
Okay.
Um, I I guess you could also indirectly kind of look at where the fence is located, because. I think your point is, you can have a six foot fence if it was more than whatever the setback is, five feet, ten feet. So I I think that's kind of the chair, the chairman's point there is that, you know, so I I guess if.
Well, it's one. Well, it's one variance or the other, right? Because, so, and the building inspector told us to get this variance, so.
No, I I think, I I I think the height variance is the only variance. Uh, it's not a setback. You're not seeking a variance for the setbacks, but I think the chairman was kind of looking at in his mind, he was. Yeah, I was. Part of the analysis would be, well, this is right on the property line as opposed to four feet setback. So I guess just confirm how far it is from the property line, whether it's six inches. Right, I'm kind of, I don't want to speak for the chairman, but that's kind of what I was.
So if I could, I apologize for cutting you off, John. If it, it it's approximately, I think, a foot from the property line. Um, but the substantiality, well, I guess there's two things. Um, and this is me putting my lawyer hat back on, but the substantiality is reviewed in context, which I I hear what you're saying. And and in context, meaning what effects does it have on the neighborhood? Uh, it's, you know, you can have a a ninety-eight percent, you know, variance request. But if if it has absolutely no harm or effect on anyone, then it's 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 evaluated as such. Um, and I think I just don't want to get caught in a situation where we start getting confused on what the relief actually is. Because per the building inspector's direction and and. Uh, from what I understand, prior variances and in the R one zone, at least, if we're subject to this provision, which is applicable to the residential district. Uh, the variance would be focused on the height itself.
Yes, exactly. All right, yeah, I I see that.
I mean, at times we've had discussion uh that, you know, we've said, well, if you. Put it within the setbacks, you can erect what you want.
Right, so we wouldn't be here.
So I think that that's the the theory that Eric was looking at was the fact that it, you know, it's it's a more substantial fence. Then we're, we typically allow between actually private residences typically, uh, depending on the facts. But uh, that's the point Eric, I think Eric was getting at is that we've, we've said it in comment before that, okay, if you're gonna. Put up a six foot fence, you gotta do it within your setbacks, and that's all. I mean, you know, uh, you've got to have the setbacks met, that's all.
Okay, well, does anyone else uh have any other questions or comments on on the uh variance?
Go ahead.
The only thing I was gonna add is, uh, thank you to the clerk, uh, to the village clerk for following up with the county, because um I know John said that, and we appreciate that very much. Um, to the extent that I can help in any way with the county before the next meeting, I'm happy to do it. I can be very annoying, so, uh.
I can attest to that.
All right, so let us um uh end the discussion now, but leave the hearing open until the next meeting. And we'll continue, we'll continue then.
Okay, and the meeting is December, it's two weeks from today, right? December seventeenth?
Correct, yes.
Great. Okay, well, thank, thank you so much.
So there's no additional information you guys need with respect to the height variance question, correct? I mean, at this point.
I'm fine.
Okay.
I'm good.
Okay, I just want to.
Very much.
Let's move on to the next agenda item, which is to review the minutes.
So, uh, Eric, uh, should we just uh make a vote to not close the public hearing, but to adjourn it?
I I didn't think that was necessary to vote on. Um, the chairman simply. Uh, declares the hearing either ended or whatever.
Okay.
John, do you?
Um, I I mean, if there's any question, you definitely want to vote on it, but as a matter of procedure, it might be better to vote on it.
Right, will somebody make a motion to, um?
Yeah, E- Eric, I'll make the motion to uh adjourn uh the public hearing uh for continuation. On December seventeenth, along with the uh issue of interpretation of the. Uh, code with regards to fence heights, uh, if any are applicable to the B one district.
All right, um, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, the motion is passed. We'll now move on to our next agenda item.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
John, you know, you could probably, I I don't know if you need to stay around.
Um, I'll just, I'll just hang out. I won't, you know, I'm off the clock. I got some other stuff to do, so I'll hang out and.
All right. Shall we take a moment for the board members to um read the minutes?
Yeah, you know, I'm actually trying to get them up. Uh, hold on, I I don't understand why I have been unable to. I mean, first of all.
Screen. Pull them up.
Can you, can you share the screen, sir?
Um, yep, I can. Can you see that?
Yeah, you know what? I just got it now. So there's the minutes. Thanks, thanks, Laura. I just got him now. I I was having trouble with my tablet here. Thank you. There's no reference in here to applause for Donald and Aaron's uh contrib- contributions.
An emoji's in.
Yeah, no, I'm just teasing. I don't see any changes to be made. Thank you, Michael. No?
I think it's as long as the um, the explanation the current building inspector has issued their referral to the ZBA. As long as that's specific enough, um. That's fine. I suppose it also kind of it's summarized in the bold section up above.
Are you thinking the um, just specifically the point about the former building inspector?
Well, just that the second bullet says that. Issued her referral to the HDRB, which issues a sort of bit of appropriateness from the fence, and then it doesn't really explain what happened. I I think it's kind of implied in there that then that doesn't, that that's not sufficient. And that they need to take action again. But if 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 it doesn't have to be spelled out um in detail, I think it's fine.
Oh, you're, you're saying it's missing a link uh about?
Yeah, I guess it's missing the link.
Yeah, uh, and and the applicant um then proceeded to request a billing permit.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. It's a good idea. I would change um under call to order. The first bullet point, uh, it says that his final meeting as chair. I would just make it his final meeting as a ZBA member. I I looked back at the recording, and that is what he actually said. And um, and it's more informative, because he didn't just leave as chair, he he departed the board entirely.
That's right. Maybe he was trying to leave his foot in the door.
I'm sure he wasn't doing that.
I I'll cast out, try to pull him back.
The name of the attorney needs to be corrected on the spelling, and I'll I'll do that. It's more rounder with an O, not M E.
Where where is that? I'm just curious.
Under the heading workshop.
Okay, got it.
Anthony, first name, Anthony, last name, needs an O.
So good work tonight, Eric. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, both for, if it weren't for both of you, we would be in trouble. We're at the Bearman, oh, and speaking of which, well, before we move on to final business, um. Would someone like to uh move that we accept the minutes as revised?
I move that we accept the minutes as revised.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Okay, so our final business, um, there, um, I found somebody who may. Be a suitable new member, and um he's talking with Dave Mirandi now. And so we, that would, if that's successful, we will, um, we will interview him. And um, and then um, we'll have just one open seat. Uh, so if either of you, so there still is one open seat as far as I know, and if either of you knows of anyone who would be appropriate and willing. Apparently, what Dave would like is for the person to send a letter of interest and a brief resume to um. To Dave Mirandi. That would be the first step to take. Laura, you mentioned.
Thank you for that, Eric.
Yeah, yeah.
Thought you knew somebody?
I've been trying to convince my next door neighbor, and I asked him about it, and he said he was interested, but he hasn't um followed up. So so I'll, I'll follow it again, and I'll explain that that's the the process.
Well, once he commits, you'll be on for twenty years.
Don't tell him that.
I'm not telling him that part. Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll give it another shot. Although I have to say, I mean, I think having another woman would be useful on the board.
Yes, yes.
The candidate I found is not a woman.
Yeah.
But is your neighbor a woman? Is that?
No.
Oh. Yeah.
I'll, um, I mean, my. My network in Cold Spring is small, but I'll, I'll give it some thought.
Thank you.
So Eric, how are you finding, uh, you know, uh, getting into the uh? All the requirements of being the chair, like the little nuanced stuff of sending notices and how's that working out?
That is, I I feel like I'm slowly getting the grasp of it. Um, I do have a question in that area for John first. I was reading um some of the open meeting requirements, and one of them seemed to be. That any records to be discussed at a meeting should be made available to the public ahead of time. And that seemed to include draft minutes that are going to be reviewed. In my, so am I, should we be posting? Um, up till now, we have not been posting draft minutes. Should we be posting them before the meetings?
Yeah, you can post them, but make sure they have a stamp on them that says draft. In fact, you should be. As soon as they're ready, they really should be available as long as, but you can stamp them draft.
Okay.
Instead of, I know a lot of boards do that. They just wait, they wait, they wait until everybody approves it, and sometimes you'd always get a quorum. So you don't always meet every month, and you know, next thing you know, you're approving nine months worth of minutes uh in one night. And some clerks will say, oh, I can't release the minutes because they're not approved. That's not true. Um, as so, as long as they're in draft and indicated that they're in draft form. They should most definitely be available at the clerk's office, and if you want to post them on the website, even better. But yeah, there is a requirement, um, for instance, as well, if you're reviewing um a resolution. A lot of times, if you have, if the board is looking at it and referencing to it, that should also be available to the public. Uh, within reason, I think, is a phrase they use or or something to that effect.
What about uh like these, the two letters we received today in support of the fence at thirty-three Market Street? I will mention those at the next meeting. Um, should they be posted on the website as as public records too? They're addressed to the board.
Right, that is, I mean, that's, um, I think that requirement kind of lent itself to. Where the board is reviewing a document, whether it's a comment memo from their own engineer. Or or whether there's like a resolution. I don't know if it really applies to public comments, but of course, the more information you have available to the public. Uh, and if it's feasible for the, for Jeff to do that, then yes, absolutely the better.
Yeah, the 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 idea is more disclosure and not less. I mean, that's the.
Right, I wouldn't uh concern yourself the fact that you haven't been posting everything on the website. It's, I I think it's, the requirement is really tailored to uh comment memos from engineers. Or architects that represent the board or or draft resolutions that the board may be discussing at that meeting.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any other business?
I I just had one other question. Uh, the, now we know that uh the thirty-three market applicant will come with uh. Maybe past examples of what we may or may have not have done in a B one district regarding six foot fences. Should we do a look back at all into any cases of that uh to see what the reasoning was? Behind granting or disallowing that uh? In a B one sense, is it make any sense, or we just wait to see what they come up with?
Yeah, my my guess is the, number one, you got to find out first if they were even issued permits. Um, and if they were issued permits, I don't, the building inspector probably just stamped it approved. And there's probably no ration, ration or or reason that you're gonna find uh with, why the building inspector acted the way. He did. If you find. Um, some of them had variances, or if there was an interpretation on record from the ZBA, then that would certainly go through the analysis. And be very helpful. Um, but my guess is many of the fences that they're probably gonna present, probably, a lot of them probably don't have any permits. And the one and the other fences that do have permits probably don't have any variances or interpretations associated with them. And the building inspector just approved them.
I think we had some recent ones in the last, I would say, within the last year to two years at at the latest, uh, that. Came before us for variances and, you know, whether we granted them or didn't, we we have resolutions to what was discussed. In in those, and maybe.
Right, I I thought you was talking about fences in the B one.
Well, yeah, I'm just referring to B one. I mean, what, right, uh, you know, when I'm thinking up and down like Main Street. You know, uh, that that I can recall, there were several applications uh before us, and. Uh, we'll have to look at that to see whether we were consistent. What did we look at? My recollection, and I, because I don't want to impose my recollection on the board. But I'm just simply saying that, you know, we look at things such as nuisance and so on and so forth. John, what's your understanding of uh? Yeah, erecting a higher fence for privacy purposes?
Right, well, I think in this case, given the side, the whole point with the fences is if you have.
And I'm talking about this case. I'm just talking about any case. I'm talking, I don't want them to think that we're talking out of shock or anything about this case, but. What do you think in general with regards uh? Uh, what's the issue of privacy and, you know, higher fences? Whether it's residential or or um business district.
Right, I mean, I think it makes sense if it's a budding a business district to have a higher fence to provide more privacy. Clear, um, kind of, uh. You know, block off the noise associated with the commercial businesses. You know, so this, in that case, it makes sense if you have a residential abutting uh business uh use. Uh, when you have the two residentials, I mean, the issue is, is it blocking light? Is it, is it, you know, is it creating a feeling of almost like uh claustrophobic kind of feeling? Where you have these big tall fences um as a fortress around these homes. Um, so I I think a lot kind of does depend on on each situation and each, each, each lot. Specific to the application as well as the neighboring lot. Uh, you just kind of take it on a case by case basis.
I think that um this board. I think that this board has, just in my time on it, we have talked about privacy as a rationale and we have. We've, we've seemed to have felt that it was not a valid justification. Because everyone has an interest in privacy. And if you admit privacy as a legitimate justification, you're essentially nullifying the code because then everybody will claim it. And and get a pass on that. Privacy by itself is not a weighty, is not, is not a justification that carries much weight.
Right, because a person could come to get a variance because they they have a particular privacy. Issue or something, but then they leave the land and that variance is running with the land. Whereas the purpose of a variance and maybe a higher fence. You know, the way we've typically looked at it with regards to nuisances. Is that even if that person who lived in that private residence and had, say, a business that had. Emitted too much light or noise. The fence is still there for a purpose. It didn't just serve the purpose of that one individual who just had a. Individual interest. I had done research, John, just to mention to you in the past. Where I I came up with some court of appeals cases or something like that and I was looking around for it today. Which sort of went to the issue of the privacy and 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 whether or not. It can be the sole factor and it just, it it it's tended to. Not. Recognize it whatsoever. I mean, I'll I'll find those cases back again and I I don't want to put language in.
You gotta focus, I guess, not so much on the, on the need. Of the applicant. But just look at the five factors, it's.
Exactly.
The extra, the extra two feet is, at the end of the day, is where it's gonna go through the balancing test. I mean, I guess privacy. Kind of may come up as you apply the balancing test, but just because somebody wants it for privacy, I mean, that's a valid reason, but the point is. Okay, well, is the extra two feet that's gonna get you that privacy, does that work in this situation? Does that work, you know, is it substantial? Is it gonna be outside the community character? Are there alternatives for this property? You know, we understand you want privacy, like Eric said, everybody wants privacy, but the question is. Does, does the extra height work in this case? In this situation, in this application?
I agree, yes, there's no doubt we go through the five factors. I mean, not just saying, oh, this just shoots it down because it's a privacy request. I'm not saying that at all. I'm just simply saying if they came in, oh, well, we want it for privacy, but they don't mention, you know, big crime lights or. You know, excessive noise or business foot traffic. Privacy is at a very low Ebb of interest, my my understanding, but I get it, we definitely do the five factors, we have to go through it. And that just becomes one. Typical element, right?
Yeah, I would say it would be a sub element, really. I guess it might come under alternatives, other alternative ways for them to get more privacy. You know, I I don't know, I mean, everybody, like, like Eric said, everybody wants privacy, so I would just. Really just focus on the height difference that's being requested and how that impacts the neighborhood and the environment. And and what type of percentage that is.
Okay. Well, thanks for your help.
Anytime.
John, will you be on the next? Will you be at our next meeting?
Yeah, I think I'm open that night, so yes, if you need me, I'm here.
Yeah, I think.
I think we we would appreciate since we will be. We will be getting to the nitty gritty vote on the interpretation.
John, what do you think that what I mentioned earlier is that we have to make sure we have the specific code. Provisions, you know, sort of lined up and how they're cross referenced and why we're relying on it, why and, you know, to to back up our interpretation. Is that the appropriate thing to do? Put it on the record?
Yeah, I think you wanted to put it on the record because then the building inspector is gonna rely on that in the future because it seems like in the past. Variances. Weren't needed. But now, you know, you have a new building inspector, you have a fresh look at the code. Or it's really the first time it's come before the ZBA. So yes, I I think it should be and it sounds like you guys are leaning towards agreeing with the building inspector. That a variance is necessary, though I think your basis is on slightly different grounds. I don't think she ever cited that section, I think that Eric had found. But regardless, you kind of agree with her, but on different grounds and and I think you should cite the section. And kind of go through a very brief analysis of, you know, why you've you've come to this interpretation.
So would our decision be memorialized as a resolution then?
Yes. Yes. So.
Resolution.
What's that?
You just issue a resolution like any other resolution?
Yes, you can, I mean, you don't have to write it out if you don't want to. You could just, you know, do a verbal resolution, you know, that, you know. We, you know, and I can kind of write it out for you guys. The kind of framework. Before the meeting so that we have it in front of you.
Okay, because I think that's important because. We're not trying to write the code ourselves, we're simply trying to interpret what's there and we have to then point out why. And what provisions we are in fact saying.
Right, that'll help, that'll help in the future for, you know, next time somebody comes in with a fence in a B one. There it is, right there, section so and so, and there's consistency. You know, applied by the building inspector and potentially future zoning boards.
Because all this does get forgotten after.
Yes, it all kind of just.
Right, so it it it's something that will be a valuable tool going forward. Go ahead, Eric, if you have anything further.
Nothing further. Anybody else? Would somebody like to move that we close the meeting?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Eric. Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.